We're all set.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is 4:31. I'm going to call this special meeting of the Moorestown Select Board to order on Thursday, June 26, 2025. Do we have any changes or additions?
No.
Okay, hearing none, and we have an agenda item for executive session.
So I would make the motion that we find that premature general public knowledge regarding contract negotiation related to the Moorestown EMS services provided to the town of Elmore would quickly replace the Moorestown public body at a substantial disadvantage.
I have a motion, I have a motion by Chris, a second by Richard. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 That would be unanimous.
I would move to take yes.
Right, you're taking the yes.
I would move to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations related to Moorestown EMS services provided to the town of Elmore include the following individuals. Will Cory, Tina be joining us via Zoom or?
Cory, last I knew, was coming, but Tina, I do not, I think she left.
Okay, let me include them, just in case I deserve. So it would include the following individuals, Sarah Haskins, Town Clerk, Cory Gobier, EMS Inter-Chief, Tina Sweet, Finance Director, and Brent Ray, Town Manager.
Second motion by Chris and a second by Richard. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are now in executive session. So we are just coming out of executive session right now, it is 5:30. Just waiting for Richard, Craig to come back into the room. So go ahead, Chris.
So I am going to make a motion to recess our executive session until after the public hearing on zoning amendments.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Chris to recess executive session until after the public hearing, which is going to be held right away. And there is a second by George. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as suggested or as proposed given? Say aye.
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 Unanimous?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we are out of executive session. And we have not adjourned that meeting.
We have.
So if you want to, we can do that later. We have not adjourned a special meeting.
We recessed here.
Okay, so. Andy, I'll let you change gears, let me know when you're ready.
Okay, I'm just wondering, are you, you're going to take this up after the next meeting?
Yes, we are.
So if I have to end this meeting?
Yeah, you have to end it and start it up.
Yes, but I mean, if you're going to, if you want this recorded after this meeting, I don't know how to do that, because this is going to end.
I guess. Just open up a new one.
Just open up, okay. So.
I think you can restart, I think you can restart ones too as well, I don't know if the copy's over or not.
Okay, I'll try that. Okay, so that's done, let me just open up the next one. This is the select board meeting, correct?
Yes. Special. Yes.
This is another special select board meeting. Good.
No, not yet, I opened up the wrong one.
It's okay, take your time.
Little bit of housekeeping, anybody has a signed sheet out there, if you guys can do that for attendance.
Okay, we're back to going now.
Okay, thank you, Andy. It is 5:33, Thursday, June 26. I'm going to call this public hearing slash special select board meeting to order. Do we have any community comments? Do we have any agenda changes or additions?
Yeah.
So the one item on our agenda are the proposed 2025 zoning bylaws. And I think the board has copies of those. Board should have copies of those. And we're here tonight to hear a presentation on these zoning proposed bylaws changes, so.
The AS.
Oh, where's the microphone?
On the桌子. Red. Did you print the package or? The package with all of?
No, because they've been provided so many times in their. All bylaws. There's links on the agenda and there's link on the website. Do you want a red and blue? Black?
I have a red and blue, what I was missing is the summary page.
Yes?
At the very end.
At the beginning?
The summary of the changes?
Yes.
Oh. There's.
So I got it. Page 110 of our document.
Ron, I sent this, this to, this sort of, I marked up, did you use that any?
Well, maybe not necessary, if you'd like me to, is this where we're starting?
Yes, yes. Would like you to give us an introduction of proposed changes.
ETN, Tancov, Chair of the Planning Commission. So tonight we have a hybrid set of informations. We originally intended to, to push this zoning package through, I'm sure it was to be February. And so I have a list of changes, a summary from that moment. And then what I've added to that was a bunch of column, what I call the driver of the change, which I think was per the select board's request at the last discussion earlier in June. And then we have in combination, the blue sheet from, that Ron created a summary of all of the final set of changes where since February, with Ron's help, we added a few other items, one per council request and several items that Ron felt were really important before we forwarded the final zoning package to you all for review. So again, what I have in front of me are two pages and most of everything is identical, almost, so that's where this is going to be a little bit difficult.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, we'll work through it.
Did, um, did you all receive this summary where I added the column, like the driver of change?
Yeah, we have.
Okay, we're right here.
You want to live your practice? It looks a little easier, but?
No, I can see it.
Yeah, I have a reform that had pretty self to be after get it up on your path, but it's the same thing you did.
So what I'll do is basically, the only way I know how to do this is the way Todd just do, to do it, which is basically going through one by one.
I think that's a great idea.
So section 201 was a deletion of the mixed office residential zone and the, which now becomes the medium density residential zone. And allowing the DRB to rule on sewer service area boundaries, that's a very changing, was, for us was general, general housing opportunities.
And if, yeah, this, this change in the zoning district is compliant with the town plan?
I believe so, yes. In that particular case, there was a, Todd had reached out repeatedly to Bishop Marshall, who owns most of that property, and they had no intention of going forward with any kind of mixed office residential projects. So we, we can always change to a similar usage, making this kind of a zoning change, since ultimately mixed office residential can be almost entirely residential. And basically resubstituting office.
So ETN, only because it's going to come up here a number of times, by driver of change, general housing, you mean?
Opportunity for housing.
Okay.
So anything that we, was not specifically required by the state to be Act 47 and Act 181. Or our, as an outcome of that, it was really intended, was, was intended by us to try to incentivize or enhance opportunities to build housing.
So it's an internal driver.
So just, we'll review the, finally I have four categories. The Housing Acts are Act, Act 47 and 181, Reaction to Housing Acts. I can get into it a little bit, but it's, it's basically our thrust, the thrust of our actions after those laws were passed was to propose controls so that we could help to manage the outcome in certain cases, like the form of buildings, changing setbacks, et cetera, to try to manage. Well, the state basically superseded our existing zoning rules about the number of units per specific size lot, and we wanted to try to manage the outcome.
So those five Housing Acts and Reaction to Housing Acts is just basically bringing the zoning bylaws into compliance to a, is that right?
Reaction to Housing Acts is specifically bringing the bylaw into compliance. Housing Acts, Reaction is basically us trying to put in place controls that, such as form controls or design criteria for, to, to manage the result. For example, we require small torches on primary street facing portion of the building, regardless of the size of the building now.
But it is in response to the statutes?
Yeah, that's why I use the word reaction. There's one for resilience, response, and then quite a few what we call general zoning improvements. A lot of that comes from experience with the DRB, the need for clarification, interested parties questioning specific language and rules, et cetera.
So that's basically the category of changes that we would have, that would have taken place many times in the past, just those general zoning improvements.
Yeah, I would generally say that interpretations change and circumstances change, the size of projects, the scope of projects change, and something that, which that maybe was never used before is used now and is questioned and needs to be updated as a general statement.
ETN, the, it's, I guess it's 206.3 that create the new cottage court, small single family homes. I assume that that's compliant with the new, with the new Homes Act as well?
Yeah, that specifically is written as an opportunity to, it's basically a method to do multifamily, but in separate units on one parcel. So it's, it's a new opportunity, it's not a restriction, it's not a requirement. It was, it's something that we felt was worth trying and see if anybody takes, takes us up, us up on it. That in particular came from the text, I forget the author's name, but a book by a professor, I want to say in Oregon, called The Missing Middle. And described a lot about how to incentivize what was termed a missing middle housing through zoning rules such as these, trying to control the form of buildings so they don't get too big for the neighborhood that they're placed in, while really allowing and enabling increasing density, which is what the state has thrust upon us. And then controlling the outcome so that we get like, we get neighborhoods that are, they're denser as a result, but still have the same look and feel mostly that they always did and aren't going to be dominated by colossal buildings that aren't of scale, the general thrust.
Okay, I'll let you go back up to the top there. Let you do your.
204, sorry, 204.4, edit waiver percentage, so it differs by zone, creates waiver bonus for community improvement projects. And we added the use table for Act 187 and 181, building height reductions at accessory farm business and MR zone. 204.4 is, is the summary page, so that is the receipt of a lot of changes, because it's, it's our summarization of usage, the usage table itself. 204.
What's that?
It has an easier, we gave you a table, spread stuff out.
We can move that table over there.
Get it comfortable. Two, ETN's going to be up for a while. Chair, what am I, ETN can hear from. I don't know how the hell it's going to pick you up.
Better, ETN?
Yeah.
So as I was saying, this is easier, 204.5A. And B, contain a lot of edits because they are the summarization of our usage, usage, and so they represent a lot of different source changes. I did put Housing Acts there.
These changes are all in response to essentially the Homes Act?
Yeah, mostly, as the summary states, there were some other changes of waiver bonus for community improvement projects. It's not specifically a Housing Act change, it's a bonus. But editing the table for Acts 47 and 181, and specifically like, if you look at 204.5A, you'll see dwelling, single family, dwelling unit two family. And below that dwelling, three and four units. There's no, in zoning, we can't, we zone for single family any longer, so the usage changes to just a simple dwelling. And one to two units, because in rural residential, where there's no water and sewer service, the state mandates that we allow duplexes. So again, there's no zoning for a single family home. And within the village, where we have water and sewer, whether it's a one unit or a four unit, there's no distinction in zoning any longer. So those, those are the types of changes that we have to make. Shelter is deleted, or that, that rule, forgive me, I forget exactly why that was, but it was part of one, Act 47, I think. So it has to be deleted from the use table. Are there any specific questions about the use table, including 204.5B, which is the dimensional requirements? We did make some changes. Again, comment what I just described about the minimum area two family doesn't apply any longer, for example. We have to make the distinction between one and two unit and three and four units, depending on where you are within the town. LDR, for example, drops to 8,000 square feet to match Act 47, minimum density requirements, where there is class one development, which is water and sewer. We deleted MOR, as I stated in the first, in the first line. And medium density residential. We changed the front slot setback to be a little bit smaller so that houses could be put closer to the road. And that's approximately it.
So questions on 204, 204, and 2?
Just curious, on the use table, I see we've added recovery, recovery residence with the group home, but we've, and both marked out shelter. Can you speak to those just quickly?
Like I said before, I, I don't, it's, I believe it was a response to Act 47, there's a specific legal statement made and we require to delete shelter because, and Ron or Tyler might be able to back me up on this best. We cannot regulate their locations, I believe, per state statute.
That's, that's. That is correct, yeah, and again, I don't know if verbatim, but that's my general, I would agree with that, that's my general understanding, is that you cannot discriminate, restrict where these can go. This is, I think, born out of the pandemic, we're running into issues where people are going to find, you know, places, shelters for, for people, you know, the motel voucher program being overused, oversubscribed and things like that, it was a real effort to.
Tyler, I'm going to suggest you pull a chair up closer to here, because you may be talking again. And I just want to remind the board that Ron Rogentz is on, on Zoom as well, so. Some further clarifications.
Well, thank you for that clarification, because I just don't want people to think that shelters are allowed, but that.
No, if, if anything, they're more, more generally allowed.
And, and the recovery residence, that's interesting, any references to why that's now, like, listed?
Well, it might be a little bit flip answer, but I think that's just the new name for such establishments per state statute.
That explains it.
Yeah. And again, I think it's, again, in an effort to, given the demand, I believe it's an effort to make it easier to put those, to put those online.
That makes sense.
You can.
Shelters have become recovery residence.
No.
It's under group homes. Group.
Yeah, there's other things that are kind of, that are, that they're, and Ron may be able to speak better for that particular point, but it's in an effort to make it easier to build those, to have it, to reduce the, they would be preempted by a local zone, and I think that was one of those.
Yeah.
Just things to make it streamline the process in terms of getting them built.
Yeah, yeah, very different halfway houses and that.
Yeah.
If you look, you can see that under shelter, we had C's for conditional use, and CB, commercial hospital, and HDR, and it's permitted in the MOR. And now all that's eliminated, and now where we have recovery residence, it's permitted everywhere except the industrial zone. And I believe the rule is that if you allow housing, you must allow a recovery residence or a group home. There's no, a building is. And we no longer allow, we don't allow residential use in the industrial zone, so that's why that's not permitted.
Thank you.
Okay. Design criteria, section 206. This is perhaps where the bulk of, of our reaction to the Housing Acts was, was applied. Design criteria, reordering edits, regulating village zone, single family homes for the first time, again, because we're within the village, lumping together single family through four units per state statute. And we deleted industrial, industrial zone four regulations.
Why exactly that?
Oh, because it's no longer in the industrial zone. On Bridge Street. 206.1, delete first floor exterior access townhouse rule, and this was a rule that we tried out and decided it didn't really work. Where a way to prevent the building of large apartment buildings in areas we don't really think they fit would be, was to require that each unit have its own ground floor access. But ultimately, the one time this was exercised, they got around it in a way that made the building kind of not really fit for well, anyway. And so we realized that that was not an effective means of control, so we're deleting it. Revision of garage rules and new rule for covered front entry and walkway. The garage rules. Attached and detached garages shall be located at least five feet further from the primary street frontage and then foundation of the home or business that the garage is accessory to, and at least 20 feet from the closest edge of the sidewalk. So we added attached and detached to this change. Again, trying to, in the village, make new construction comport with the established residential method that's been in use for 150 years, which is that the house is typically close to the street and the garage is setback to it so that you have more of the welcoming neighborhood of people facing homes and entrances to homes rather than garages. This was, there was a strong reaction to a proposed project on Maple Street a couple of years ago, where the opposite was proposed, and there was a very strong reaction.
Very strong, I'm fair.
So we're trying to apply it to both attached and detached garages. And then pedestrian walkway, when the sidewalk is present along the front edge of the property, a four foot wide unobstructed walkway consisting of bricks, concrete, or pavement shall be provided to connect to the building's primary entrance. So again, we're talking the village streetscape, it's customary, and we hope it will remain customary to have a walkway between the sidewalk and the primary entrance to the, to the new mall. 206.2. Two oh six point two. This will be for, these are the rules for dwelling units of five or more units. So we are allowed to regulate these differently than you dwelling units one through four per state statute. And here we added building size maximums. This is in response to the Jersey Heights buildings. Who is, I'm forgetting the name of, but each are seventy-something units. And it was felt that these did not really fit well with the neighborhood. So after the fact, we feel it's better to control the size of the building relative to the scale of buildings around it. And that's what this rule attempts to do. So building size maximums. The width of the new structure, which shall not be subject to waiver considerations, is limited to sixty-eight feet or less than its depth and/or less. And its depth shall be limited to no more than one hundred and fifty percent of the depth of the larger of the two directly adjacent non-accessory structures. So that would be if there's house A and house B and someone puts a building in the middle, that building can't be more than fifty percent longer than the longest of the two houses on either side. That again is straight out of the text guidance of a missing, missing middle book that we reviewed. Trying to enable larger construction with apartments as the market requires, wants, but to limit the size so that they don't dwarf their neighbors. Because these buildings will go, I mean, the primary place where they would might go, as we've seen, is, is in high-density residential where you clearly have many single-family homes still. But open lots or also the, the financial incentive to build much bigger buildings in addition to, that's what our zoning allows, minimum units per acre in HDR. So we're just trying to put a control on that.
And how big?
Yeah. Sixty-eight feet, interestingly, was a response from one of our larger developers who noted that if the building is that wide, they can do underground parking. We had sixty-five feet or something like that. It's just a minor tweak that was, I thought, helpful. Building maximum storefront window glaze rule. This again was a, was a problem with the building next to the gas station on Jersey Heights, just off the bypass, where there was a contention about commercial, it was required to have commercial use on the ground floor per its permit, but it was not used that way. And so one way to manage that going forward is that the building, if it's to have a commercial use, should be architected for a commercial use. And we have a standard glazing requirement that says commercial buildings should have fifty percent of their frontage that's designated commercial as essentially glass area. So if the building is architected that way, it would not be a very comfortable place to live. And it would be much more likely to adhere to its permit requirement. And then disallow direct stormwater discharge to town land and roads. That was an issue at Brit Street. That was, I think, was solved with a gutter after what was requiring the town broker to go down there every day to solve the sidewalk in that particular location because it was creating a little hazard, a sidewalk hazard.
At the end, just a question. We have several businesses in the area that have been required to construct sidewalks that their buildings become nowhere. Margis, Margis and Mover, there's one by Hanaford's that's just by the driveway. Is that addressed anywhere in here?
No. Chris, that is part of a separate policy, the sidewalk, the North Town sidewalk policy, which is that, which I administer, but is not in the zoning regulations. It's a standalone, standalone document.
All right, thanks.
Questions? Two oh six point three, we created the cottage court, which I just described earlier. As a new alternative method of creating more multifamily housing.
Are you hearing any interest developers on this?
I don't hear much, but.
I, to this point, I have not had anybody approach me by an interest in this in particular. I do know the closest thing we would have to kind of this idea is over on First Light, I think First Light Lane or anyways, it's heading towards, heading towards Stowe. You might notice these little tiny homes kind of in the field there to the right. That's the kind of the closest thing. This would be that kind of thing on a much, on a bigger scale where the units are, I believe, eight hundred or so square feet, as opposed to Lees, which are significantly smaller, five hundred.
I'm thinking Pope Meadow would be a larger version of this.
It, yeah, it could be, yes. I think those are on separate lots.
Yeah.
But if they were on one lot, that would be the idea, except on a much more condensed and smaller scale.
Yeah.
Would this incorporate tiny homes?
It could, yeah, that would be.
So there is one in Stowe. If you're heading out of town, you turn to go to.
To the right there, yeah.
Von Trapp, there's definitely one right there that's, they're all gathering.
I think, yeah, that or closer one would be like, if you know where Max Market is, there's that little, you drive down, there's like between the fire department and that, in that area over. Kind of like, kind of like that. It's kind of my vision.
Is the, on Elmo Street, as you're heading out of town on the left, used to be the Moody House. There's one that's built kind of in the back that looks like, I think they're trying to make it look like a barn. My understanding is that they're hoping to put two more in there to kind of make it into a U and have one look at their chalet and one look like something else.
Built around separate lots.
Those are separate lots as well? Okay, thank you.
So the, like, if I hypothetically, I have a half-acre lot and I split it, I split it and I want to put on, there are a lot of places making small homes, eight hundred square feet or so, that are great for their modular construction, they can be trucked in. You can do a project, let's say, four homes and then with parking in the back, and you just have a sidewalk right down the middle of them. And you can basically take a small lot, put what is like a four-unit building that can be rented. Each of them can be rented, but it's just a different feel. It might be a lot more attractive. At least that's our read on it. We'll, we'll see, but it would typically be owned by one person who just rents them out.
Yeah, it's like sort of having an apartment building, right? It's a, you know, is it, for example, like, let's say you have a ten-acre, you know, you have a ten-acre parcel, you have minimum lot size in the district is an acre, that gets you ten units, rather than have them each on their own lot, you can densit on the one lot, reserve the rest of the land. And rather than have them all in one building, this lets you kind of split them up into kind of cluster a building, whether it's four here and four here, allows for denser development pattern, to kind of conserve the rest of the land. So that's kind of like a little bit of an idea of how something like that would work.
Yeah.
If I may, at the end, was it Bob Probus that had feedback or recommendations?
He, he did, and we incorporated them. The distinction is only that he was planning to split those lots and just sink each, each of their own and sell them individually. So his example was used for cottage court development, like two oh six point three, the number of stories, for example, size. And then the minimum lot size. We waffle on and then settle on fifteen thousand square feet. But yeah, he was, he was helpful in showing us examples of essentially what I just described, which are small homes manufactured in a factory that can be trucked in, dropped on the site very quickly and relatively easily, that make a nice model for cottages, for this cottage court. So again, this is an incentive, it's not, we're enabling something. We'll see if anybody.
Because we actually did have somebody who approached us. I can't remember if I was, I'm assuming you are, who wanted to bring in tiny homes onto a lot and we got into it. At the time, we only had trailers and that was the start of the tiny homes. So this has been, I'm glad to say this is a concept that we've been talking about or has been talked about town for quite a while, actually.
Okay, two oh six point four, modify existing waiver provision to accommodate building size maximums that cannot be waived. Three feet. Let's state it otherwise. If it can be found, so it needs at least two or four. Okay. I think we're just cleaning up language and that's good. Two oh seven, this is just a minor change to add the same glazing rule. Two oh seven is a store district, so most of that's commercial. We're adding the same glazing rule required, building to SAD, if it contains commercial storefronts, that it have at least a fifty percent rating, just as in two oh six. Section three two three, this strengthens a flood zone bylaw for federal guidance. So new structures in flood zones have a two-feet of freeboard. And Tyler, if you remind me what freeboard is.
Yeah, freeboard is a space that is basically from where the, where the water is to where the mechanicals are, you want to have that space that's underneath it, you can't have, you don't want to have mechanicals and stuff stored in there, gives you space to do that. It applies, an easier way to think of it is also if you have a building that's on like steels or something, the minimum space between like the base floor and the base flood out where the highest point of the water, that's called freeboard.
Four oh one, better line permit requirement to be as revised definition of development. There is in definition section at the end, we revised the definition of development. And so section four oh one. No development may take place. We simply struck some rules, struck the word, the word building. And then eliminated the specific verbs and said take place instead. So I would solve, I call it a grammar. Four oh five, four oh five point three, deleted the infectious invalidity prohibition. I'd like to look that up again, and we did it, I think, because of a state rule, but I don't remember why exactly, you know?
I don't know if it's on my head. Essentially what infectious and, you can't do something that would make the other lots non-conforming, essentially is kind of what, what it's, what it's getting at. So like if you had an odd-shaped lot and you were like trying to subdivide it or something, if it resulted in creating a non-conforming lot, you can't do that. If I'm, if I'm getting that right, that's my understanding.
That's right, I just unfortunately can't remember the origin of why it came as well.
That I know, that I'm not sure either, and maybe just to allow for the fact that you have some lots that are kind of legally non-conforming just for size or other reasons. So this may let you further develop those lots if they're connected to municipal water and sewer. If, if it was still resulting in them not conforming, I'm not entirely sure.
Ron, did you speak to it? You're.
Yeah, no, if you could go over that question again.
Infectious validity. We deleted the clause of infectious invalidity, which is that we would not allow a parcel to be created if it itself, the creative parcel violated any. We deleted it, I thought, because it was superseded by a state law, but we talked about this quite a long time ago and I don't remember.
Yeah, no, my memory was, or is that the issue was people across the road, single-family homes being required to do things that they shouldn't be required to do under the Home Act. So it was a combination of reasonableness to, to not require things of people that had nothing to do with the project. And, and the Home Act saying you couldn't force like a single-family home to do something that's typically reserved for multifamily. So I think there was a combination of issues within, other than being a creative word that really isn't in state law, it was, it was kind of, it kind of didn't have enough guidance either. So I think it was probably a multi-factor reason why it left. Hard to apply, you know, too many scenarios and things like that. So it's, it's better without it, to tell you the truth, because of what I did here were some of the issues with people trying to design projects.
Thank you.
Yep.
Section four oh one to five. This is home businesses, revise home business parking screening language. We simply added, not to locate, when possible be screened from roadside views and from views from windows of all the budding properties. Section four two zero. Require provision of prohibited effects of the act. Restate required provisions and prohibited effects of the act, add affordable housing waiver per Acts forty-seven and one eighty-one. Oh, see, I missed, I misapplied, and that is Housing Acts. So you have listed all limitations imposed by twenty-four BSA four four twelve, shall be adhered to. And there's a, a list that was required by that rule.
So we're just restating that for clarity?
Yep. Four twenty-two, frontage and access requirement being moved to eight twenty, where it's being slightly revised. Four twenty-two, frontage and access requirement. What we did change in there is up to two dwelling minutes, some access for private driveway.
Four twenty-two?
Yeah, I was confused by the.
Discussing by zoning industry, how the permit up to two dwelling minutes access by private driveway is provided for by permanent use in the driveway.
Right, yep. That is what we actually did there. Briefly look at it, plenty to see what's there now. I don't know if this was in, frontage on town roads and private roads. Bound to the corner or some twenty-four BSA.
I do know what it is.
This is all new text, but it didn't come from four twenty-two, according to the edits.
So I think, you know, as far as like the required frontage and the access are up to two units, because I think anywhere is by right, you're allowed to build a single-family home, you can build a duplex, I think that's why that was what it is.
It's like from one to two.
Yeah, because it's just saying like a unit, it just seems as if it's two units, because you're allowed, you're allowed up to two by right.
So again, it's just clarity.
And that's how I would interpret it now anyways, if it's a A unit, I would, because it's in effect, it's important to remember, all these are in effect right now, so I have to kind of make my decisions based off of that.
Yeah, Tyler, that's, that's exactly right. I, I actually wouldn't say you're interpreting the bylaw, you're applying state law which supersedes your town bylaw because of the Home Act and every, you know, wherever a single-family can go, you can have a duplex or it's a second unit and you can't apply a higher standard because of that. So I think, I think you're right, you're just not interpreting the bylaw, you're following state law that prevents you from saying no, basically.
I've just kind of got used to that, and just, hey, Richmond always required, we already allowed two, so it was two of one, it's a safe for me.
I, I think there's just an, the edit of moving that whole frontage section to section eight twenty is not listed as change. And that's left me a bit confused. So we can get to that, that's in section twenty. Four twenty three, add emergency shelter to the list of statutorily protected uses and shorten ZBL sections so simply refers to twenty four BSA four four thirteen.
Eddie, and for, for people's benefit, and I don't, I know there was one question on shelter, the statutory addition, if you will, is emergency shelter and they have a definition for that. And it, it might, I don't know if you want me to, I could, it's a one sentence definition, but it, it, it doesn't exactly match with state law. I mean technically the zoning bylaw probably should say emergency shelter because that's what's in the state law, not just shelter. But if the emergency shelter definition is any facility, the primary purpose of which is to provide a temporary shelter for the homeless in general or for specific populations of the homeless, and that does not require occupants to sign leases or occupancy agreements. So it's, it's sort of an open door type facility, which is different than the group home situation that you mentioned earlier, which is a separate statute that deals with licensing and controls.
Oh, I see, so then I misspoke when we were talking about the use table. And it's no longer in the use table because it's protected by.
Yeah.
Twenty, say forty four thirteen.
Yeah, correct. And, and it's just a, I was just pointing out that the, the term emergency shelter is technically correct if that's a change the board wants to make.
All right, that's how it's listed right now is emergency shelter.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Four five one. Parking and driveway requirements, select board to work with developers to create new off-street parking that counts toward parking minimums. That's pretty straightforward. Four five two, change pavement requirements for development, tie pavement rules to zones instead of village line. So we're defining what parking space shall be in size and marked designed and maintained to provide vehicular access for public, for the private road and regulated so no maneuvering therefore must be placed on any public street or sidewalk and parking space shall be required, shall require one be able to be parked and parked to move another vehicle. And then we're requiring off-street parking, if you have more than, space for more than two automobiles in a CB, commercial, hospital, HDR, LDR zones shall be paved.
So how do you have one point five parking spaces required for employee for larger shift?
How do I have?
So you're talking about minimum parking ratio requirements for our business services, healthcare, professional offices, one point five.
Well, that's simply.
Chris, well, basically how a lot of that, this stuff comes from, it's, and I'm not sure this specific table was inspired by this or not, but there's a, a lot of these, there's a, and I'm going to probably butcher the acronym, but it's the International Institute of Traffic Calculations, IT, ITTEP, help me out there Ron a little bit, but if there's a whole, there's a booklet that's.
Yeah, it's a, I, I T, I T E is correct. And, and I, I, are you asking the, the question related to the exact number or how the calculation is done?
I'm thinking that it, it came from, I would imagine that that came from, or was at least inspired by that is where the number of spaces per use comes from, so it's a whole formula.
Yeah. A lot of bylaws get rid of the table that's in the zoning bylaw in lieu of that national standard, just, just because there's, there's so many different variations. The current Morristown bylaw sort of has you fitted into the closest use to get that formula number, one point five or one. And there's just so many variations that the national standards pretty much cover everything and give you ideas of what to do when it's not specific. So you, you know, without working with it in Morristown, you, you probably should put that on the to-do list to get into that I T E book and, and make it part of your bylaw at some point.
Yeah, it is, it is extensive. It's about yay thick Bible thin pages, which lists every use that you could possibly think of and.
So it's classroom reading material.
Oh, exactly. If you find yourself unable to fall asleep one evening, I believe, grab yourself a copy of that and shouldn't take too long.
This talks about a dwelling unit, one parking space per dwelling unit, but if you have a two or three bedroom unit, you know, is that really appropriate if you have a couple that are, that is working, couple, and they go in different directions, but you're only allowing one, one parking space.
One thing to bear in mind with, I think, you know, the planning field in general from my experience is they're definitely, the standards definitely moving away from requiring more parking, moving towards requiring less. So I would expect to see that pared down because again, I think the end goal of a lot of this type of work is to encourage denser development, i.e. more walkable communities, more access to public transportation, therefore reducing, eventually reducing the need for vehicles down. Granted, are we ever going to get there? You know, that's an interesting conversation, but I think that's.
We all saw that.
No, but that's, that's kind of the thought process I believe behind it.
No, and, and it is, it is true that the home act prohibits municipalities from adopting a parking formula greater than one per unit. So that, that's just that you can't, you can't get to two, even though it might make sense in the, with everybody having one car per worker these days, it's, you can't mandate it as part of the development.
You are running into issues with like particularly around ADUs where their municipalities were having very large requirements for like, like talking about like five units for like, there are five spaces for an ADU. So in effect of, well, they couldn't ban ADUs, they in practice banned ADUs by making the parking requirement so onerous that you couldn't in fact actually build it the way that you wanted to build it.
And these are listed as minimum parking ratio requirements. Perhaps the table itself seems to be edited to repeat that statement. Next time. Four fifty four. Deletes the ability of the DRV to increase the number of parking spaces required as per state law. Four fifty five, create new traffic speed dependent driveway setback requirement. This allows, let's see, located by the purchase fifteen feet plus the full width of the proposed driveway. Especially at that, if roads are posted speed limits thirty five or more, the driveway setback shall be fifteen feet plus double the full width of the proposed driveway. I believe this was on recommendation of the town highway superintendent who needed the ability to recommend the placement of driveways based on this, based on the speed limit of the road and the curve cut that was located.
Is that for sight distance, do you remember?
It's a, it's a, it'll be a little fuzzy on when this came up, but anybody else remembers, feel free to jump in. Speed on the road is changing and not anything much.
Well, typically what you would have, the reason that the speed matters is that the sight distances matter and change depending on what they are based on, depends on what standards we use, I think, and I should break my knuckles more than me. Richmond used B seventy one, what are we, what are, what are ours, A something? I feel, but there's a certain, as with anything, there's a formula that you use, like if the road's X speed, you need to have minimum sight distances for the driveway or a certain number of feet based on that.
This was actually used in my neighborhood, there was a driveway that, the exit, the way people were coming down, it was really dangerous and so it was a like, and it totally made sense.
Yeah, and what you can do in that cases in some instances is the state requires like signage, the applicant to install signage, like warning, like warning driveway ad or something like that. If it's, if you can't achieve, they, they can't achieve the minimum sight distances. So there's like some provision, you can still build it even if you can't get it by other means, but I haven't dealt with that here yet. I dealt with it once in Richmond on subdivision where it came up.
We're scratching out like seventy five feet in favor of fifteen feet plus the width of the driveway. Driveways are twenty feet, that's thirty five feet instead of seventy five, so we're making it, which makes sense on low speed streets. Four fifty six. Clarify longstanding access permit process for driveways into zoning bylaws. Access permits required from driveways, proposed driveways on town roads but not private roads nor on state roads require an access permit issued by road commissioner prior to their instruction or use. Four seventy, delete the MOR zone, we talked about that in the news table, allow multi-sided signs, so four seventy is signs. MOR is no longer zone. We changed in four seventy one point two from two-sided signs to multi-sided signs. And expanded exemptions for wicked signs and banners for town events.
A wicked sign is basically like a.
Election sign.
It's like the, say, state.
Exactly, but already political, ninety percent political signs.
It's the political stuff that I suppose that should, just because of all time.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's a whole other issue.
So yeah, we specifically added wicked frame signs. Can be up to forty five days and it's because of early voting. And Todd was pretty clear that he, he couldn't, he couldn't take down political signs in good conscience, even though the zoning bylaw required it.
That makes sense.
But just had a clarification that once the election's over, they need to come down.
Yes.
So clarification, now that there has been a formal vote on the childcare center, should the childcare centers signs come down? I know it's a hot topic, just clarifying here.
So.
That's the, that's not, we're, we're talking about local elections, municipal elections, state elections.
Yeah, it's a wicked, yeah.
Those, those are in violation as it's, that is unapplicable to.
Okay, that's what I needed to know was because there are a lot of them around, so I wasn't sure if a wicked is wicked, so you're just saying there are anything like that, any topical, like the ATV that was a big thing at one point, any of those were great.
But if there had been a vote on the birthday setting, they would have to come down now.
There was a vote.
I, I know, but if there was like a.
Oh, a formal, right, ever. Yeah, it was an election. Thank you, clarifying.
Yeah, good question.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I didn't want to skip over the, the discussion you had regarding signs, and I heard somebody say that some signs were in violation. I think there's, there's, there needs to be clarity from the town enforcement people, including the select board regarding signage. And what I mean by that is it, the right of way is controlled by the select board and the highway crew regarding signage, election signs, temporary signs, you know, paint your house signs, all those things that happened during the summer. Once you get outside the right of way, it goes back to Tyler Masha under this provision here under four seventy nine. So I didn't, I didn't want the town to be thinking that there was one enforcement mechanism for those signs that come up ahead of election day. There, that, that only applies to outside the right of way. If the people that are running for election or have a, a, a position to take on a ballot item, put the sign that they have in the right of way, that's back to the select board and what your policy is regarding how quickly you remove those things. I asked the state of Vermont this question once for state highways and they said, we know we're going to get buried the week before elections. We don't allow it at all, but we know we're going to get buried with people using our right of way. If the signs aren't gone within forty eight hours or seventy two hours, whenever the state highway crew comes by after the election, they simply remove them. And I think they might bring them back to the state garage for a little while for people to collect them, but the town should have a clear policy on what to do about the inside the right of way and outside the right of way so that people know that. That's all, thanks.
Thanks, Ron.
Yeah, and I will just say as an aside, enforcing sign regulations has been problematic both in my first job in Richmond and here. That's not part of the changes that we're looking at tonight, but as written, yes, it's correct, including people's yard sale signs aren't permitted, other things like that. And I know, I guess my concern with it would be, I'm not going to say today whether we should or shouldn't do it, but bear in mind if it's an office of one, of one, essentially which it is right now, you know, the time spent driving around picking up signs is a sign that's not being spent reviewing people's permits or reviewing the zoning bylaws, so that does become, and again, it sets up an expectation of, well, well, in the rules we're saying we're pulling these, or it's my job to go pull them, if the practice is, is that that doesn't happen very often or in a very limited case, it's, it creates a false expectation that I'm part of the community that this thing is going to happen and makes people understandably upset when it's not occurring. And that's not so much as of a, a willful, you know, desire to not do it, but just a, you know, a triaging of, you know, hours versus, you know, competing responsibilities. And that's something to bear in mind, whether or not the juice is, as I say, the juice is worth the squeeze in that particular part. That's not in here tonight.
Yeah.
But that's something that's in my mind, you know, if I were to look at interest in maybe in changing some of that, that is one thing I would be interested in changing. Yeah, not before you connect.
Well, you suggested earlier that the town manager could do that.
He's sprawling around town, he's free time.
He, he has, he has done it. And again, it's one of those things, it's like.
I was, I was just being, I was just making sure that people are still listening.
They can get crazy.
Yeah, of course, it could get legislative to replace chair of some committees. All right, moving on.
Again, it's all, it's all doable, right? It's just a question of.
Just.
May our resources.
Yeah, because there's so many gray, gray lines, I wasn't sure whether.
Yeah.
And this, and that.
And again, I think if I was to drive around and pick up every yard sale sign that people had in the summer, I think you guys would be getting quite a few phone calls about that.
Four eighty four, deleted the qualifying statement about where the gas stations are allowed because they are no longer allowed anywhere. So that's just, you know.
Good point, they're no longer allowed anywhere.
We are not, we hope to never permit another gas station in Morrison.
In a new location.
In a new location, we took them out, it's out.
For existing locations only.
Right, so the, the, the zoning, the regulation has to remain in the bylaw to manage the existing one.
Is there a section in here that deals with charging stations?
Not yet.
Okay. That's what those gas stations are going to become. If you look at the definition, I believe.
Charging station or gas.
It's called a vehicle fueling station, right? I think definitely.
Yeah, this first, like vehicle fueling station was pretty long, which could be applied to electric vehicles. It could be, so, and from my experience having been, I haven't permitted this here, the one gas station I did permit in, in Richmond was the redevelopment removal there off of exit lines of twelve. And that was required, any new vehicle fueling station had to have at least one D, uh, fast charger in there. And to be fair, I think gas stations are also trying to struggle with how to permit them because of the high voltage, there's not a lot of regulations yet as to how close they can be located to pumps, what types of fire suppression, that sort of stuff, because it's different than like a, you know, electrical fire, let's say like a Tesla or something. Let's say like a Tesla or something is a very different animal as opposed to a gas vehicle fire. So trying to, I think this developer who I worked with on this was kind of proactively taking some measures to try and anticipate potential safety hazards to it. But it's still very much in its infancy in terms of a lot of how they're getting built. I'm sure these will, the rules around will change.
And so where do we stand if an entire gas station becomes all, or somebody wants to build a completely charging station? No gas?
We had a brief discussion about that leading up to this thrust to get this zoning package through legislation and legislative bodies. And my memory of that, Ron, was that it would be permitted a little bit differently likely. And thus would have avoided the whole question of a gas station. And that would be for now because as Tyler mentioned, a policy is being created on a day-by-day basis.
So yeah, we're.
And I don't think, the same rules don't apply. We don't want any more gas stations in Morrison because they could permanently contaminate the ground and make it so that you could no longer use the land for anything but industrial thereafter.
Yeah.
The same is not said for a charging station. And therefore, it's worth considering maybe there it's commercial usage or some other usage that's acceptable. I'm amongst the not sure.
But that, that explains why it's very separate. We're not doing it yet.
Yeah, and again, it is interesting to consider what that future, you know, the future is. How long are you going to have them there? You know, to what extent can you prohibit, you know, are you, to what extent are you required to allow gas stations to be in an area too? At what point, you know, because the fleet mixture right now is still overwhelmingly gas power. But as that balances out, it'll be interesting to see like, can you, you know, can you prohibit gas stations? I don't know. It'll be interesting to see if you, we're not there yet by interest.
That should, that rule should develop out of the urban areas first and work its way out to the rural areas. Some of it because of the distances being ground.
Yeah, and I think if you look at, you know, the EV pickups in general too, like there's winter range concerns. There's things like that which I think are, you know, it's going to be, it'll happen, but I think it's a longer time.
It's not, doesn't have the environmental impact.
Gas stations are going to die out with time. EV charging stations are going to increase supply.
Yeah.
How long?
Not in the next four years.
Well, it's also hard to anticipate new technologies. You know, tomorrow it could come up with an engine, a gas-powered engine which completely reduces greenhouse gas emissions, right? We don't, we don't know. That's, that's the art of it. We had to deal with what we got in front of us, so it's more likely we'll do that.
Four eighty-eight, amper's recreational vehicles. We changed the word C boxes, which is humorous, to shipping containers, which is correct. Minor revision to existing rules about shipping containers. And stated if any of these structures are not so located, a zoning permit is required prior replacement. Four ninety point five. This is Todd, was his thrust to allow the uplighting of architectural elements contributing structures within the historic district. So anybody who wants to do this, again, certain incentive to accentuate the features of the Morrison ears or the cornices on Portland Street, they may with very small lights, very tasteful. Section five oh two. Well, we have a red line for five oh one, but it's not in our list. Single family and two-family willing to exempt from site plan review per twenty-four VSA forty-four fifteen. Forty-four fifteen is, is act forty-seven, is it not?
Could we just go back to four ninety point five? I have a question.
Sure.
Contributing structures is capitalized as if it was.
From that nineteen eighty-three historic district overlay map that was done by the state agency of historic preservation. We have it on file and they marked every structure and then designated it whether they, whether they felt it was a historically contributing structure or not.
Should that be defined in the bylaws?
I, I, I don't think so because Todd marked it as per the nineteen eighty-three historic district report. But, and so that would be where you would go to find the map of contributing structures. But that might be, I don't know if that's specific enough.
Sounds like a specific map. I have not personally put my eyes on it, but I'm sure we can track it down somewhere.
I hadn't, I hadn't heard of it, so I'm, I'm, I want to look at it. It's a good point. Yeah, it is capitalized.
Yeah, it sounds like it's referencing a specific survey that was done to get that designation.
The nineteen eighty-three historic district.
Yeah. Yeah, so that would make sense. So I'm sure it's either, either I have it or I'm sure the court, or I have a copy of it in the records.
Yeah, it does bring up the question, is there a definition in that historic district of what do they deem a contributing structure?
I believe a contributing structure perhaps be a structure that was included. They were listed in.
That's.
That's what I want to define, which that's how I would, if I was reading, that's how I would interpret it. It's like, okay, if it's on this list, that's a contributing structure to it.
Yeah.
Five oh two.
Five oh two. This is adding a note to require heating and cooling provisions on the site plan because doing so opens up opportunities for fossil, to go fossil-free on whatever the project is. Fossil fuel-free. So for example, a new building could be entirely heated heat pumps. And apparently putting this note in enables that project owner to then apply for grants to do so.
Okay.
I believe that was an outcome of the question about district heating on Pleasant Street.
Yeah, because it's typically, I don't regulate right now what you heat the structure with. Again, what I think that this makes sense, I was wondering why they put that in there then, other than just to list that, but that would make sense if they have an official document that.
It was required.
Per zoning, the site plan for zoning permit twenty-twenty-five dash forty-five. You know, we showed that we're installing, you know, mini splits, you know, and that was on the approved site plan. They can show, you know, and document that the town was aware of what they're doing. This is an official document. We're not lying to you. They signed it and all that fun stuff.
Yeah, no, that was, that was Hudson Street. Because I did the permit on that and.
Okay.
They had to have, they have to have very specific things, the grants that they're getting. All that compounded and all that.
Yeah, so then to make, that would make sense. So they would have to come back to the after fact to try to, to try to figure that out.
Section five oh five, modify typical DRB condition about screening meter sockets, mini-split condensers and ground utility enclosures. The language of section F, first to section F.
There's a few number ones in here.
Yeah. Six three five, delete certain DRB new development mitigation tools that are now prohibited by act four seven ninety-one. Oh yeah, specific standards and allowing a conditional use. The DRB may consider following. And delete all the ones that are no longer legally acceptable. Six forty-one. Changing the receiving party of appeals to the secretary from the chair. That's the zoning secretary for DRB, which we can title instead of the chair.
Which is why ninety percent of the community anyways is scared.
Seven ten one.
Two.
Seven, I'm sorry, seven ten. Oh, there it is. Application of regulations subdivision. Subdivision shall be defined as any subdivision resulting in no more than two new parcels rather than one. This was an attempt to, we changed it to one several years ago in an attempt to prevent so many people from subdividing and then subdividing again when what they should be doing is a conservation subdivision or PUD and doing a larger project. So we intentionally put a barrier into that process and it simply didn't work. Developers, one in particular, who just basically submit a proposal to subdivide and then X number of months later would submit another proposal to subdivide. And it simply ended up just creating more work for those individuals straight away.
Yeah, I mean, so because how this works right now is, which is unusual. And again, we don't, I don't want to bog down the conversation on this tonight because again, this changes before you. We don't need to let it get in the way. Basically, right now, if you have three or more lots considered a major subdivision, which, which is unusual as far as I'm understanding this, is that any major subdivision is a considered conservation subdivision, which carries with it more requirements on mandatory conservation of areas of, of, of parcel that you have to show on there. Stuff has to be documented. It came up on one of my DRB meetings where a gentleman was advised to apply for major one. Applied for it, but wasn't aware of all of the other requirements to come along with it in terms of documenting like, how you're going to conserve this, what have asked, what you have to show essentially on there. As of right now, Dean's correct, you could fire off as many administrative subdivisions as you want, back-to-back or concurrently without any lag in between. Because that's not prohibited. How I'm, how I'm used to it being done in the past, I'm not advocating for this, but Richmond was a lot stricter where I couldn't do an administrative sub. It was considered to call it an administrative subdivision, but basically if the parcel was twenty-seven acres or more, I could subdivide it once within seven years. Anything other than that required DRB approval. This, I can fire off as many administrative or minor subdivisions as I want. So to any point, bringing it up to two saves us a struggle, saves me having to review it once as opposed to reviewing it multiple times. But there is still no delay between when you can file those on a large parcel. So you could fire off, again, same thing, multiple minor subdivisions. And, you know, either concurrently or, you know, very close together and still achieve the same result because there isn't a cooling off period in between. And I'm not advocating that we should have put one in there, but that's just the practice of how that works.
It's a little tall.
And I think it's intentionally put in to kind of get around the, the.
Major subdivision.
The major subdivision and the conservation elements that are baked into it. And it's also, I think, unusual for how PUDs are used, at least from my experience. Ron might be able to speak more to that because he has a broader experience with other communities. But how I'm used to PUDs working is being, allowing multiple principal uses on a property, which is, unless you build your traditional mixed-use building or do a lot for kind of cottage court, which would already be kind of considered a sort of PUD anyways, where you're taking the development of, let's say, that ten-acre parcel example, right? And consolidating it to one lot, allowing for much denser development that would otherwise be allowed while you conserve the remaining, the remaining land. So that's kind of how I'm used to them functioning. So what we're doing is, it's similar to the latter, but it's, it doesn't have the multiple principal uses on a lot and some of the other things that you'll see more in the different statutes. Again, Ron has a broader experience in terms of how PUDs are used in other, other communities, but.
We have as an action item to review the PUD bylaw thoroughly in the next timeframe after this section goes through legislative review. That will be on the to-do list.
Yeah, that, that's, that's good, Etty. And I, I think I made those comments that it'd be great to dig into PUD a little bit for both of, both of what you're saying. As far as the math goes, I see it in seven ten point two. And I ran into this to a couple of the applicants that I worked with earlier this year. Most bylaws, when you start a lot count, have to recognize the original lot. So for example, where it says, the new, new bylaw is going to say no more than two new parcels. I think, I think it's probably okay to say no more than three parcels, two new parcels plus the original. You know, something that, because we're getting hung up on some of the math with some of the applicants. They don't know if that's one original lot plus the new lot or if it means two lots plus the original. So I, I think, I don't, you know, the wording is pretty minor, but when applicants look at that sentence, I think you're intending to, let's say on a fifty-acre farm lot, to allow two houses to come off with the remaining land as the third lot. Is that true? Is that the intent? Because technically that's a three-lot subdivision and you could, you could say that here. You can say, you know, three-lot subdivisions, meaning two new lots plus the original lot, are allowed administratively. I think that would be helpful for clarity. And the select board can work on that after the hearing, but I just wanted to raise that now so it's not forgotten.
I see, okay. And that's the intent there is two new parcels, correct?
Yeah.
In addition to what.
It was one lot being remaining.
So the result is three. And a major subdivision would be four.
Uh, okay. Seven, seven seventy. Require net gross lot acreages when lots are surveyed to centerline public roads and delete unused survey requirements. And gross acreages. Is that a survey shall? I don't remember why this one was required, but it was. It was a general zoning improvement. Eight twenty. Access and frontage rules moved from four twenty-two and revised to allow more width flexibility for private roads. We were talking about this earlier. Now there is eight twenty. Front to town highway resisting public transportation. These are kind of dimensional tables, however, they allow two dwelling units. We talked about that and. Nine hundred.
So the, in that front to town road, it's about fifty feet. You know, with the town roads, it increases to at least fifty feet. That matches the town road policy. Just brings that track so that they're similar.
So for three or more, so there's a weird distinction. So there's roads and then there's where a road standard is applied. For Vermont E nine one one, a road is any, if a drive, a shared driveway becomes a road when it serves three or more parcels or like three homes, like single-family homes and like, it's not ABU, but. So that's what would trigger like a road name and things like that. It could still have the driveway state of which, you know, as a, which is less onerous than building a, a rural, a rural road. Once you're at four, road, road standards kick in. It's, it's, then it's both a road in, in practice as well as name at that level. So I would imagine that's what that fifty-foot is, is anticipating that when if somebody builds another lot or builds another home or something lights further, it's going to trigger widening that anyway. So I think that's probably in an effort to preserve, preserve the space for an eventual private road if it has to be built.
Fifty feet is almost a three-run right-of-way.
Yeah.
But the town is not obligated under the zoning bylaw to take a road that's built fifty feet because it's not built to town roads.
You are the only body that. You are the only body that decides whether you do or don't pick up public infrastructure. If they want you to pick it up, they have to build it to the town spec. And I think this is preserving that. But even if they build it to the spec, it doesn't mean you have to take it.
Just to make clarification.
This does not obligate the town to take over roads.
I got a question for the town manager. Brent, I know you're pretty good at picking up on some technical language here in this eight twenty point one where it talks about coveted, coveteded, coveted. I, I'm not sure I understand that word exactly. I know the intent. But I'm, I'm not sure that the town wants to get involved with looking at the legal mechanisms for perpetuity. So I would just, you know, I, I'm not comfortable with that language, but if the board is fine, I just wanted to pick that up because it, I know what the intent is, but in order for the zoning administrator to enforce it or say that you need a 30 or 50 foot right of way width based on legal wording, indeed seems, needs some clarity on, on how the administrator is supposed to legally assess that.
Well, what would be typical language that you would suggest?
Usually what happens in a, in a project is the subdivider comes in with a project and they say, I want to build a public road. I want to build a private road. If they're going to build a private road, this homeowner association takes over control of that road. And they, I, I don't know if they, if the future owners can be restricted on never asking the town to take it over. That's the perpetuity section.
Right.
And what is the language, you know, how do they actually do that is a legal question, how the zoning administrator would review it to know that it's good into perpetuity? Making sure that everybody's signed it legally to make sure everybody's bound by that thing. It just, it seems like you could say that in your bylaw, but the administration of it is what I was asking. How do you actually implement it and what does Tyler do when a developer comes in and says, oh yeah, we, we want to use the 30 foot and here's why it's going to be, you know, never able to be offered to the town. Uh, most, most developers sort of build it close to a town road because they want to, you know, maybe have it taken over by the town sometime. So that's, that's the normal case. The select board has final say when it comes to the offer anyway. If, if, if anybody down the road said, uh, we want to offer this road to, to the town, you're going to review it under your standards or, or maybe you just have a policy of not accepting roads anyway, because you have enough of your own, you know, existing roads to worry about. So that's a whole nother discussion. I just, I, I was thinking of Tyler and Brent who would have to deal with that offer of a 30 foot. And then backing it up with the legal perpetuity language and a deed. I, I guess it would have to be in proposed covenants that the D R B would review or I, I don't know. I just, I.
Well, Ron, I mean, I don't, isn't that more? Isn't that kind of leaked out because the H O A can't compel the town to accept a road if they choose not to do so?
Well, there's no guarantee there's going to be an H O A.
Yeah, or, or just even then, or in general, if, if whoever owns this road, if they get together and approach petition you, the town to take the road over. I don't believe this, if the town is obligated to take it over.
But I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Ron, what, what Ron's saying is that there's really a loophole here for 30 feet. And people can come to the zoning administrator and say, I've met this loophole because I've covered it this to remain private in perpetuity. And is the zoning administrator able to legally review in whatever document this is contained in? Or does it require him to go back and forth with the, the, the person trying to obtain approval? Does it require the town to hire a legal counsel, billable hours to assess this loophole?
Well, the other, the other thing too is, I guess if you built the road to a minimum standard based on width, based on, uh, public safety vehicles being able to access those houses, why would we need any other language in there? Because if, if 24 feet is a magic number based on what a fire truck needs to get up there, an ambulance needs to get up there. What difference does it make beyond that? How they construct the road is really up to the developer. If they want the town to take it over, they would build it to town road specs and or bring it up to town road specs. But I think to me that the only only concern we would have is access and egress to provide public safety.
Well, I guess what I can say is how I'm used to this operating, which is different than what we do is that I had driveway standards in Richmond that a driveway had to be minimum of 12, 12 feet wide, maximum 36 feet wide. And couldn't exceed a grade of 12%. So that was an actual standard. Once it, once you built the fourth house, there was a whole set host of rural road stand specifications that we had, which lowered the grade from 12 to 10, widened the right of way to fifth, to 50 feet and required the road to be a minimum of like 36 feet wide. So it kind of beefed up the driveway standards. And if it went, if it served five or more, then it was full on, you had to build the road the same way as you would build as, as if the town would build it. So you had to build to the same, the same specs. So it's kind of like what I'm used to, at least in here, from what I've seen, I don't have a specific driveway standard in terms of how steep it can be, how wide it can be, those sorts of things.
Do we want to come back when we visit that with different language?
It's, it's possible. Again, I, it's, I know the, it wasn't what the part of the changes that you guys were looking at tonight. And I think it would be a broader, more in-depth conversation because it's something I would definitely want the board foreman and fire, fire department, EMS, everybody to weigh in on. That 12% grade, from what my understanding was, was to was a minimum grade, like a safe grade to take like a loaded tanker truck up for like the fire department. So you wouldn't risk rolling the truck or did damage to get on the way down. So I think that was part of the logic behind it. But that does have to bear in mind, if you do that, that puts further strain on developers because the way it was written in Richmond is you, and again, not saying we'd have to do it that way. Is it was, you couldn't exceed 12% at any point. So that means you got to build switchbacks in. That means if you have some steep slopes, you could have a pretty serious engineering project on your hands in terms of cutting and bang, put it, I have one project in particular that just the engineering alone for the driveway was, I mean, granted, this was a multi, this wasn't, they weren't building the mobile, this wasn't building the mobile home park, mind you, but it was, it was probably the tens of thousands of dollars in engineering just to engineer the road so it can be built. That's not building it. That's just doing the engineering work.
But from the municipal side of the ledger, when you're putting a half a million dollar piece of equipment up there, you want to make sure that it's safe.
Yeah. And that's where that, but that's, and that's where that standard came from is to make sure that that's.
Well, the highway department, the policy just changed the driveway access to the roads because I've been, so just recently there was no, so there was all kinds of craziness going on. So there is, so we've started it basically is that you now have to.
Yeah, for the first 20 feet, which is in, that is.
That's got to be permanent.
Sure, sure. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think, but getting back to this specific change, my, my suggestion would be that last sentence that, you know, said width requirement for three or more homes increases to at least 50 feet. For public or private roads. Um, you know, it's, the, the wording is not quite right because it says 50 feet for 20, for town roads. But not all town roads are, that are in use today are 50 feet. Some are narrow or some are two rods, for example. Three rod road is 49.6. So technically what hap, what's happening here is that any project that goes in is going to have an immediate right of way problem on an existing road. I think you're, I think what this is intending to do is any new roads, private or public, shall have a, when you get to that third, third or more house, have a minimum right of way of 50 feet. I think that's all you have to say in that last sentence. And.
So just strike everything after the but? Or just for all roads? Well.
For three or more.
You said right of way, but this says road width.
The, the, you got to be careful because town road, is that the travel lanes or is that the right of way? It's, it's either the travel lanes or the right of way. You're intending to say town, the public, the right of way for the road needs to be at least 50 feet for three houses or more. I think that's all you're trying to say. It's really hard these days with drainage requirements to, to do any kind of private or public, public road, less than 50 feet for some of the reasons Tyler was explaining. So it's, there, there really is no reason to have roads, if you're going to call them roads, at three or more houses less than 50 feet. Sometimes they're 60, sometimes they're wider and you have slopes. But, but, but it's the right of way. It's not the road. Right now, the bylaw says, the draft is town road.
Right. So if you said, said with requirement for three or more homes increases to at least 50 feet width.
Period.
Period.
Yeah.
So, but it's just the previous.
Right away.
The previous sentence.
I said 50 foot right of way in width.
Just for clarity, for public or private roads?
Well, if it's public, I mean, you have your own road standard. I don't, wouldn't permit a public, a, a public road. Yeah. Because unless you were to take it over. Yeah, because this is, it's a little messy because there's a distinction to be made between the E 911 definition of a road, which is through driveways or more, but that typically doesn't change the standard unless you guys want it to. And then usually the road standard would kick in for more homes. Again, there's a, so it's a subtle distinction. It could be a road and it still be, and again, I don't know if this is a state requirement or if this is, this was just, again, trying to how Richmond did it was we had, again, if it was three or three or more, or three or fewer, it was built to the driveway specs. That fourth house is what triggered the widening and all the other stuff to make sure, to make it a, to make it a road. Now, for legal purposes, it's a road. Like everybody on the road would have to have their addresses changed, the E 911 numbers changed for that road.
Does it make sense to put on your stuff to do list and maybe better define, you know, grade and stuff for future conversation, but for this conversation right now, we simply said that said with requirement for three or more homes increases to at least a 50 foot right of way in width. Period. And then the rest of that paragraph goes away.
And right of way needs to be in there.
Does that make sense, Ron?
Yeah.
Yeah, because that would still let somebody design.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. What you're talking about is exactly complicated, multi-layered. You have new policy in your highway department. You have, you know, so I would just focus on that one change tonight and, and know that you have other work to do to tie things together.
Where was the period? After width?
After width.
After width. So for town roads is 50 feet right of way in width. And everything else after that is deleted.
Right.
Okay.
That's a pretty minor change.
That's legally defined as a minor change and therefore is acceptable tonight. Right?
Yeah, unless.
Different topic. All right. In the list, section nine hundred is definitely included. We can read through these. Accessory apartment becomes a dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit. See four two three four of these bylaws or twenty four B S A forty three oh three definition number thirty eight. So it's defined by statute? Yeah. Same with accessory on farm businesses? Yep. I believe that was added after a specific.
That was the state, the state law has that. So basically what it allows is it broadened what counts as an accessory on farm business to allow farms to do like, you know, like before it was like, oh, you could only sell produce and do stuff. They might be able to do like some like cooking, like, you know, some chef's table kind of stuff. You could do some other things that are farming adjacent, I guess you could kind of say, that educational classes, things like that, that are, that befallen them, Ron, lets them sell other products other than just produce and some other things. It's pretty odd.
But it is defined by statute.
It is in state statute right now is the law. So regardless of whether we put it in here or not, it's, it's, they can do it.
Accessory uses, minor language change. Or doing building height. We add the sentence, building height or structure height above 40 feet that is intended to be occupied may only be permitted upon prior regular confirmation from the fire chief. But the town's existing firefighting apparatus will be able to fully access at least two sides of the building or structure. So this ultimately was born of the Act 47 decree that designated affordable housing projects could have, add an additional story. Our reaction was to reduce the building height. Because of the great fear that someone could build a building that could reach a ladder truck. There were quite a few meetings involved here, but ultimately we came to this conclusion that the building definition, building height definition had to be changed. Possibly.
There, there is a bit of a open question. And this, when this came up, it started to come up, I left Richmond and never got the answer for it. If you read the, the tax of 47 is on page four, it's number thirteen. In an area served by municipal sewer and water infrastructure, allows residential eventual development, bylaw shall permit any affordable housing development as defined in subdivision forty, uh, forty three zero three, subsection two of this title, including mixed use development to exceed density limitations for residential development by additional 40%, which shall include exceeding maximum height limitations by one floor provided the structure complies with the Vermont Fire Building Safety Code. So what I was worried about with that definition is that if you could, if you can get that extra floor by complying with Vermont Fire Building Safety Code, I don't know as if being able to be served by a ladder truck is or isn't a requirement of that. So if you can achieve that by putting a sprinkler system in there, or some other means of doing it, because there are buildings clearly that are built all around the world that don't have access by ladder truck or that are complying with fire or anything. I don't think you can compel them to do this. And it was an open talk, a conversation level in Richmond. And in fact, I we were waiting something from legal counsel on that when I left. I never got it, but it's an open conversation as to whether or not a requirement that you could service a ladder, if with a ladder truck would allow, would prohibit you from doing that. If an applicant came to me and said, we have something from Vermont Division of Fire Safety that we, this is safe to do for four stories. I'm not sure as if I could deny it because our, our ladder truck couldn't reach it. Because this would preempt that.
We have two different thrusts here in response to Act 47, the rule that was written here. And that is we, we, we took a story off the building nights across town, took an air cut to it as a result. So in theory, we're safe. And what we're trying to do is compel developers to make the formal inquiry because we don't want to be in a position of having a building constructed. Whether that's, whether the sprinkler satisfies the requirement and the ladder truck is no longer an issue, it's a point of contention. Whereas if the developer asks the fire chief, can you reach my building? Then we'll know. At the time, the development is proposed. It's compelling. It's compelling, but I think legally, we also had legal counsel review of this that told us at the time of this wording here that really was, it told us that we could not specifically require the ladder truck as a building height control. They said it would not hold up and therefore we took a haircut to the building heights. And then we also added this because we still want that review to occur, even though it may not be legally binding in this particular case. Sort of a belt and suspenders approach to the overall issue. But the one that's really most important one is we reduce the building heights so they can be reached by our ladder truck.
Yeah.
Do we have any buildings over four stories? Jersey, Jersey has none over four stories, isn't it?
I think those.
But what down here? And where's the issue that's not over four? I don't know how to change the total from the other thing. By the way, when you build a building like that on a hillside, where do, where do you measure your 40 feet?
Height is a thing from the, how we, unless we've changed it, it's the average, it's the midpoint, not the highest point. It's the midpoint of the roof from the aver, taken from the average finished grade. If I remember off the top of my head.
Because the main buildings are actually five story, but one is an underground garage.
Parking garage, yeah.
So I guess the question here is, is that we pass this the way it's written. Does it put us into a gray area in terms of litigation?
Legal counsel will be reviewing this. They're just, are busy and can't. So this is just initial here. I, I want you to invite Ron to give feedback on whether to, you know, the, the agenda says adjourned, but there might be reason, reasons to continuation or something here, so.
Moving on to commercial use, we added, this shall include light industry in all operations and processes within this. Strike weather. Provided they are located in storage warehouses, office or similar structures. This shall not include gas station, motor vehicle sales and repair. Why is that not? I'm forgetting why we, why we obstruct that. Motor vehicle sale and repair.
Ron, do you have any more, more of the handles south over here?
Well, it, we think that it's not unusable anymore.
Well, probably because it had a lot of issues with small cars being there.
Yeah, I can.
Yeah, so I suspect that how that got in there was that it never stays in one spot.
I see. Moving on. We add the definition of cottage or development. Under the, the, the definition of development was added, division of a parcel into two or more parcels, comma, the alteration of existing property lines, the creation of a new driveway access onto a public road, direction, enlargement, relocation, or change in use of any structure, or only within a special flood hazard area was added to any human made changes to improving non- improved real estate. Moving on, struck dwelling unit, single family for earlier mentioned reasons. Act 47, dwelling unit two family becomes dwelling one or two units. We added dwelling three or four units and dwelling five units or more. The definition of family at the bottom of the page with the sentence was struck or a group of not more than four unrelated persons living together for thirty-five days. I believe that was for that same, similar state statute and you remember why, Tyler or Ron?
What was the question?
The definition of family had to change. I just don't remember the, the mandate of some kind.
Yeah, I think it was for, you know, to say, well, it's the family unit, so that way you don't have like, you know, six of my college roommates get together and say, oh, we're family, we're all living here and we get those benefits or something like, something to that effect.
Well, I believe it was, we, we used to try to do that and now we can't because of this.
So that can't happen now?
Yeah, we can't find more family consequences.
And that, that came up on some houses, I know exactly why this.
That would be an issue with Johnson. And Johnson and Johnson's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it was here too for, um, houses that we rented, uh, more transitional housing.
We changed the definition of legislative body to include the village trustees. Page 57, dwelling unit multifamily was deleted because of the aforementioned dwelling unit five units or more. We eliminated nuisance. Excuse me, I don't remember why. We eliminated the official map.
Um, you don't have one where you, where it's named nuisance?
Nope, I don't remember.
I think it's because it's not mentioned anywhere in the bylaws.
Right.
That's a very recent thing, so.
Well, yeah, there, there you go. I guess it's more the police.
That might be why we had to eliminate official map.
We don't have an official map.
We don't have one, which is on the to-do list for the next round.
Um, there's a gentleman trying to.
Eddiean? Oh, somebody's talking.
Go ahead, Ron.
Thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the change to legislative body definition. And the only, the only reason I raise it is because within the context of the rest of the whole bylaw, legislative body, if you do a word search, pops up on a lot of authorities that only the select board has. And the definition doesn't go far enough by saying dependent on location unless the intention potentially is to have the village trustees administer road requirements, set fees for permits, those, those kind of things that are done typically by the select board. And I, and I think that's why the original language said select board is because the select board controls the roads and they set the fees for permits. But by saying either or dependent on where a project is, which I think is what that change does, it kind of upsets the rest of the bylaw.
Yeah, I, I guess I had the same question and I figured that legal counsel would probably advise us on, on that specific language.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to rate, point it out. Thanks.
Was there, was there a reason for this change?
The specific day we made that change, I don't remember, or honestly, but that because of village trustees are party to the town plan and party to the zoning bylaw sign-off as an official legislative body, it makes sense that they're listed. If that, if, if I can understand if legally, we need to parse the difference in responsibilities.
There's parking space.
Parking space off street becomes an eighteen, a definition eighteen foot long by nine foot wide. Parking space must be designed and maintained. Play this one, we're going to write this place.
This is similar language we saw earlier.
Yes. Uh, we've made some changes to this, the rules, this definition of setback to include the distance from shall not include. So there's a list of things that the setback shall not include. These, I mean, included fire and dry hydrants. Oh, that's right, yes, I remember that one. Notwithstanding setback is stated, at no point shall a structure be located less than three feet from the outside edge of the town maintained sidewalk. So we're just setting those thresholds. Came up fairly recently, as I recall. And saying that fire and dry hydrants don't count, it can be in the setback. Sorry, this is a, this section of structure shall not include, yeah, dry hydrants. Uh, next is the definition of served by municipal water and sewer infrastructure per 24 VSA 4303, definition number 42. So we're having to designate where class one development is. Properties within 500 feet of an existing sewer line. All is being described as being inside the sewer service management area.
I, I did have a, a question about that and it was more from my reading the text of of 47, where you read that in the, in, uh, in Act 47, it modifies 24 VSA 4303 to note that. And it's 42, an area served by municipal sewer and water infrastructure means the following. An area where residential connections and expansions are available to municipal water indirectly and indirectly discharge of water systems and are not prohibited by, and it lists several things. But my question to that is that this seems to say with the class ones that you have to be hooked into it. And I don't necessarily think this is, that's the case per state statute. And the reason why that matters is if you're in an area served by municipal water and sewer, by rights, you're allowed up to have four units of housing inside of one single family home. And it drops your, you have to have a minimum density of, uh, to allow up to five units an acre. So that is the question is whether or not, I don't think, and this is an open question, I think, with this law is, does, do you have to just be served by it or do you actually have to be hooked up to it? Because there's a big difference between where the actual infrastructure goes and then the water sewer service management area. If you're going off of the area, not whether or not you are actually connected to it, you get that density bonus, I think. I'm not sure, Ron, if you had any thoughts on that. That was something that I was concerned with. And again, I, because I don't think it's really well defined in, in the act either.
Well, it's not defined well in our act.
Yeah, they, they, the state, the state act did modify things to, to not require only sewer for some of the density bonuses. It, it actually expanded to say soil capacity as well. So you're, you know, you're, you're, you're almost not taking advantage of that soil capacity uh, within your village centers to get some of these densities under the home act. So I, I would definitely try to make, make sure counsel touches on this issue about water and sewer service versus water and sewer capacity within these denser areas.
Well, my, my concern is from, somebody comes to me and wants to retrofit a single family home or proposes to build a single family home or proposes a home that's got four units of housing in it, and let's say they want to put their own septic system in. But they're in the water sewer service management area, which is an area that's by definition served by municipal water and sewer. Should they get that density bonus even if they are not in fact served by municipal water and sewer?
Can't imagine that's the intent.
Well, I, I think density, I think, is the intent. And I think just, and there was talk this year, I think it was taken out of the bill of if you abut a water and sewer service district, that you could get that same density. So I don't know as if you even have to actually be connected to it, which is why, if that's what we're saying, but that's not what the home act is saying, we're creating some problems there. Because if we're saying class one, you have to be connected to municipal water and sewer, like actually connected to it. And the state statute says, no, you just have to be in the area. Well, that's a, could be, that dramatically expands the number of homes.
It seemed like that, that it is to be hooked up to sewer, but.
Right, because this is mandating that if, if you're within 500 feet of an existing sewer line.
That's what our law would just accept.
Proposals say it's mandatory, but as Ron just said, if they have sewer capacity on site, they can still qualify for whatever bonuses they could get without being mandated to connect to the sewer.
They also mentioned soil conditions, which sounds like.
And that's been my, you know, and I, I hadn't had, I was just starting to get some people that I never actually took an application all the way through because the way Morrisville has it, it's water and sewer service district here only encompasses homes that are connected to water and sewer. Or I think ours is a much bigger area in terms of like, if you look at it, Matt, as opposed to looking at where the actual infrastructure is, they're, they're different. From what I.
They're, if they're required to hook on during 500 feet, who pays for it?
I, I was just gonna, I was just gonna point that out. What, this paragraph really should be deleted. It has nothing to do with the zoning bylaw. It, it references state law sort of halfway there, not fully, not very well. And I don't even know what the title is. I, I think this is one example of two or three other ones in the draft bylaw that are putting regulations in definitions. You really should have definitions in the regulations and regulations in the regulations part. You know what I mean? You need, you need to define things. This section that you're talking about now, including the fire chief's written approval thing that you talked about earlier for building height, those are regulations that don't belong in the zoning definition section. And part of the struggle that you're having, I think, is looking at a definition that's really a bylaw, trying to figure out how it works. And for some reason, this section is implementing a village ordinance that talks about 500 feet. So I, I don't think you want to go there. Any, and any part of this section is, is not well thought out in how it impacts other things.
Is that 500 feet mentioned elsewhere in the bylaws?
Yeah.
No, not in the bylaws, it's mentioned in Morrisville Water, like, uh, sewer ordinance. I mean, with Ron, Ron makes a great point there, doesn't he?
Well, I mean, because again, from a practical, practical standpoint, somebody comes in as a developer and says, I'm in the water and sewer management area. I'm therefore served by municipal water and sewer, even if they're not going to connect to it. Do they get the density or they don't? Because if it's, again, if you look at the overlay for what that district is, it is significantly more larger than where the actual pipes and stuff run.
But I don't think it is though.
Not a definition, I would agree with that.
We've specifically changed it for this zoning bylaw change to ensure as the best, best that anyone can, can say the class one development now overlays the sewer service management district so that no one can force the extension of a line in a direction that village trustees don't want to supply it. And our class one development, our class one development definition does compel requirement according to the, the words that are used. The required class one development, which is water and sewer, which makes you comport with the requirements of Act 47 and 181, requires hookup. At least the way it's written, right?
In our definition, it requires hookup, but in the state definition, it doesn't.
But it doesn't matter necessarily because we require it, therefore it will be done.
Right, but the issue becomes is if this trumps what we have. So if the state says you don't have to be hooked up to it, you just have to be in the area served by municipal water and sewer.
So obviously a good question.
That, that, that's my concern is that the whole point is that this trumps what we got.
We need to, like, people do more research. Yeah, we need, we.
That's, that's, that's a concern that I have with it. And again, I'm not sure, Ron, if you think I'm barking up the wrong tree, I'll, you know, but that's my.
No, I, I did, uh, just, just for the Eddiean's benefit or the board, I did take a bunch of time. When this came up on a project on Cottage Street to look at the SSA. Now, it's SSA in the village ordinance and it's SSMA in the town zoning. It's minor point, but when you run the, what Tyler just said is true. When you run the public sewer lines, the ones that are owned and maintained by the village. Within the SSA. That area of public sewer is much smaller than the SSMA or the SSA. Because you're tying it into the zoning bylaw. And, and I, and I think what's that, what that does is it forces private developers to petition the select board. For lengthy, private sewer line connectors in town roads. To go find the next village manhole or the next village sewer line. So if, if you were to, if you were to take the public sewer lines only. Which is what this definition says, it says existing sewer line, it doesn't say public or private. But I, I think the intention was village owned and controlled sewer lines. And you, you did a map just on that, the existing infrastructure. Then you'd have a much smaller SSA. What happens because you incorporate eleven-twenty as the SSMA, which doesn't match. The actual physical ability of the sewer service area to reach everything. You end up with a busy, a, a mixed message to developers that they can go somewhere where they might not be able to. And I, and I would, would at least think that your SSA on the village ordinance. Should match the roads that have public sewer owned and maintained by the village. A much smaller area, but that, that makes the most sense. When you start to fool around with your zoning boundaries and try to meet the intent of the trustees. And what they think the sewer area should reach to, and then the trustees say, we're not gonna, we're not gonna invest in our public sewer. Then you automatically are, are putting the burden back on the select board to allow a whole bunch of private sewer. Uh, simply because eleven-twenty and the SSMA say, uh, that, that's the sewer district, when really it isn't. It's sort of a hybrid district between private and public. Um, and, and the town ends up with a challenge of having private sewer lines running its, in its roads.
And to be fair, um. Ron and I had a conversation with Scott. And. They were not aware that the SSMA. Was more expansive than their SSA. Am I correct? In the conversation we had?
Yeah, there was, there was a finer, yes, you're, you're correct, and, and I think where we ended up. Yeah, when, when we, where we ended up on that was. We, we weren't going to change the SSMA. But it needed to be worked on. And your, your, your conclusions or your direction from the trustees. No more pump stations, uh, no more public sewer lines are going to be run. We're, we're kind of on hold or frozen with existing. That, that really hasn't been talked about in relation to eleven-twenty and what it, what it means for that much larger area. So we, we do get requests, I mean, when I was in the office more. We do get requests for, I want to do something on this property, it's in the SSMA, how do I get sewer? But it's not in front of my property or abutting my property. And then they have to, you know, and, and I think some of the newer housing projects had some of this going on too. Where they put the private sewer down the town road, which generally is, you know, a, a very short stretch to the public sewer, seventy-five feet. Something like that to reach the public sewer out, out in front. Uh, but we, we did look at that three hundred and fifty foot extension. And I, I know Scott, um, or Kevin over at the Morrison Water Light gave us a list. Of four or five big projects that ran extensive private sewer, uh, within the town road. Because there was no public sewer, but they were still in the SSMA. So they ended up encumbering, if you will, the public right of way with private investments, which the village said they don't want. They don't want that. They, they're not going to accept it even if somebody builds it for them. It was my takeaway from meeting with, uh, M W L.
Yeah, it's just my concern is again, if somebody comes in and applies. And they're in that area that says it's served by municipal water and sewer, even if they're not actively connected to it. Do they or don't they get the density bonus? Because again, I think the state definition just says available municipal waters, or it doesn't say anything about being connected to it. So it's available, and if they choose to build their own. Infrastructure, do they still get their density bonus because it's available? I'm, I'm not sure, and again, and I don't know if we can, and it, it, to Eddiean's point, if it looks like we can layer. Be more restrictive on that, and I think that wouldn't be specifying that you have to physically be connected to it is. A good clarification, but the state doesn't want to specify that. And they may not want to because. You've run into cases where municipalities are deliberately not building infrastructure. Because they don't want the density bonus in their downtown. One country comes to mind, uh, Westford. Another municipality that deliberately actively opposes building municipal infrastructure because they did not want the density. They didn't want to allow that density.
So can we get back to the definitions here? I think. I think we're all, I mean, this is, I mean, it's very interesting, but this is going wrong and, uh, and that we can't solve it.
No, I understand.
It's a different conversation, sorry.
Thank you, Laura. Where were we?
Two thousand, yeah, the, um, served by municipal.
Yeah, page seven, yeah.
The next is emergency shelter.
Sounds like it's defined by statute. All right, I got all split up here. Time by statute, yes. There's a way to change, sketch plan. Sketch plan, yeah, that's, uh, sketch the book, so the initial information is specified in seven twenty, uh, seven twenty point four B. Structure. Structure now includes a ground mounted utility enclosure. I believe that's something to do with the RV requests.
You're the, you're the, um, the answer, the evidence.
Yeah, might be a silver track to it. Uh, that's the end of definitions, and then, uh, one thousand is the zone boundaries. And, uh, the intent behind, I'm not going to go through the read of the zone boundary changes. As we all know, we use the zone boundaries as written, as the official definition of the zones. And then we provide a map in the appendix that currently states not approved by the select board. That is. Done act for the fact. And is intended to be referenced. Now going forward, uh, Ron has made a very good point that we should probably. Flip the precedence because it's just easier for people to read maps than it is to get this intent to be perfectly correct. But for this particular effort, we maintained the written zone boundaries as the. As the legal precedent for zone definitions. What I would note is that per that, this last discussion about SSMA. It was simple. I, I'm unaware of the problem of SSMA versus SSA that was recently described. If you look at the map in appendix three, uh, sections of low density residential have become smaller. Uh, and the wording in section one thousand reflects that because of the effort that Todd went through with the village. To shrink the zone boundaries to match the existing sewer infrastructure. Now I say this was simple because that was my understanding, and that's why the, if we look at before and after of this map, we only see the after, uh, the proposed map right now. But you can see that especially in the southern part of the, of the low density residential, significant sections have been removed from L D R. Because they cannot be reached by a sewer line, as agreed to between Todd at the time and the village trustees. So that's what's being proposed. I don't know if that changes any of what was just discussed. Okay, we've been at this for a while. Are there? Questions, concerns, thoughts at this point?
I think that we have a laundry list of questions, and it's going to be, uh, reviewed by legal counsel.
How do we want to, uh, see going forward? Do we close this hearing tonight? Do we recess this hearing?
Can we recess it to a date to be made?
That's what I'm thinking, but, uh, I, I admit that Ron has much more experience around zoning bylaw. Uh, changes and, and Tyler, so I, I would recommend. Conferring with them, uh, that they most recommend considering.
Ron, Tyler?
Ron?
Uh, yeah, obviously, go ahead, Ron.
Okay, I'll, I'll start. Um, yeah, so you haven't. From my perspective, the select board has not really completed the public hearing process on this, uh, bylaw amendment. You, you've completed your overview by Eddiean's presentation last meeting, now you've gotten more details, you've asked a few questions. You have, I think, a full package at this point, if you will, from the planning commission. Usually what happens next is that you'll continue the hearing and you're running, I think, I think I heard you started running out of time and energy tonight to continue. And continue the hearing so that it's open for public comment, Eddiean can come back if he wants. Um, all the board members can bring their own individual concerns and questions, ask other members, ask staff. And start to hash out those sections that you didn't quite get to tonight. Um, you also have a pending legal review, so you could keep the hearing open for that, so that when it does come out. Uh, Eddiean and the planning commission can get it and look at it and participate in the hearing. So my, my recommendation is that you continue it. I don't know how long, whether, how much work you want to do before the legal comes. You might want to have your own kind of work session, hearing, inviting the public, you know, tonight to a certain date and time. And then have that, knowing that you may have a third continuance of, of way of accepting the legal. When that comes in. So, you know, that, that would be my, you don't have it all tonight, you don't have the full board discussion, you don't have the legal. The only, the only other option you have tonight is to say, we got enough, we know what we're going to do, we're going to close the hearing. And then you have, then you can work on it as sort of like a, uh, a, a work session without public input anymore. I don't, I don't think you're quite ready for that, please, but that's up to you.
So if we, if we recess this public hearing to a date to be warned, would that, would that be appropriate?
You don't, you don't have to, you don't have to warn it again, it's been warned, the set of amendments is not changing, you're just going to continue to another date for more time. You know, you just need more time to work on it. If you close, let's, let's run a scenario. If you do close, let's say the town attorney stuff comes in. You guys are ready at the next hearing to really get all the facts and answers that you need, then you close it. And then you, then you decide what you want to do about changes. If you make no changes, then you can adopt it, no substantial changes. If after that hearing close, you want to get into some things and make some substantive changes, or throw in some new concepts, or mess around with a zoning map. Or do some, something that wasn't presented to the public. Then you would have to warn a new hearing at that point, yes. But if you're working on what was presented to you by the planning commission and massaging it and trying to get it done the right way. Um, and it's all minor edits, then, then you can go ahead and adopt it without a, without a brand new hearing, you just keep this one open.
So if we can just recess tonight?
Yeah, recess to a certain time, yeah, date and time.
But do we need to choose that date and time now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, okay, so. It is, uh, what are we, the June twenty-sixth?
Um, Brent, I'm not sure what day, did you want to do it until after David gets back to us with counsel? He did kindly give us a timeline. I'm not sure if you spoke to him since then, if he has a, gave you a better idea of when he realistically could get feedback.
He hasn't given me, um, that was August what?
Was it, and, yeah, in August somewhere.
But it was towards the end.
Yeah.
So I, to be safe, um.
And to be fair, that's not an unusual timeline for these sorts of things.
I mean, we're, we're not obligated on any specific timeline.
When, when are you returning, Brent?
Why? I'm only taking eight days, and part of those are holidays, so I'll, I'll be back July eighth. But what Tyler's saying is, do you want to meet, you, you could, you could meet again in July and ask questions, but we'll still be waiting for a legal counsel.
Yeah, I think it makes, makes sense to have legal councils with.
Yes, I agree.
So that means a week being to September.
Yeah.
We need to schedule in September to make sure that.
Yeah, and, uh, that, that creates more complications with, uh, designated downtown possibly too. So, uh.
Well, because we do have bylaws, a set of bylaws that, you know, obviously exist today, that, you know, we're using actively.
Yeah, that's, um. You, you could say, uh, I think August twenty-seventh would be safe, that's a Wednesday. Twenty-eighth would be safe, that's a Thursday.
And if you guys want substantive changes though, as a result of that, I mean, the planning commission has to. I guess that's my question for Ron, is if it's substantive changes, it's got to go back to the planning commission for us to redraft it, or redraft the language. And you could tell us kind of what you want the language to be.
Well, not, 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 not exactly, the, the document that was presented by the planning commission to the select board is the final. So, planning commission draft, that their fingers don't really touch it anymore, it's totally up to the select board. If the select board makes minor changes and tweaks and clarifications, then they can adopt it without a, without a new hearing. If you get into those substantive changes and make some significant changes. You, you make those changes and you send those edits in the select board's wording. Back to the planning commission and they have to provide their comments to the next hearing at the select board. So they can't really, they, they don't have their fingers, if you will, on the drafting pen at this point. But they do have the power of the public process and, and making comments to the select board about why. The select board's ideas are not valid or, or worthy to move forward to adoption. So that, that's all spelled out in the statute, it's a, it's kind of a easy, you know, it's not an easy read, but it's, it's, it's linear at least. And you can, you can conclude it that way. Um, the other option is, and I wouldn't recommend this because I think this, the overall, the set of bylaw amendments that you have are, are good to move forward with. So, you know, it's, it's sort of a, um. If you had a burning issue that was just so significant that you want, you absolutely knew you, you were gonna either reject the bylaw, which you can do. Or you're going to have multiple hearings. That's gonna, that's gonna push you out a long ways. And, you know, if I, if I'm working with a select board and they say, we totally disagree with this whole thing, we got, we have to send it back, we're going to reject it. That really doesn't build good relationships between, because the planning commission has spent over two years on this, getting to this point. So I would say, you know. What do you do about that legal delay is, is what I'm, what, what I'm considering, and I, I. I don't think you can, I don't really want to advise you not to go ahead without legal, I think that's kind of a critical, this is a legal document you're creating and to move forward without it. Uh, is, is, is sort of opening yourselves up to challenges and legal expenses that you, you can avoid by doing it right the first time. So it is, it is not a good schedule, and I, and I, and I, I don't know, I don't know how to get around it without, without having legal pick up the pace a little bit.
That, that, the, the legal response is what would help me the most.
Right.
This is not my strong suit, but obviously there have been some questions that have been raised, that Tyler had one interpretation, Ron might have a little bit different type. Uh, and it can. We need legal to kind of at least weigh in, uh, which side is more appropriate for us to, to include. I would not need anything else, so I wouldn't be able to contribute to another meeting prior to legal.
I'm just wondering, is there any of this?
I'm just wondering, is there any of this? I mean, it's, we've clearly identified some areas here that we need some legal counsel on. Is there some or much of this that we could get together as a board and talk about that seems simple enough to just kind of check off and put in our back pocket? Now, if it turns out that what I'll just say myself seems simple and I check off on it and then legal counsel comes back later and says, hey, guys, you messed up on that, but we're not, we're not approving it. We're just kind of checking it off and because we've got this, we, we've got a pretty substantive list of things that we're looking at, but maybe if we can get rid of I guess, say, two-thirds of this ourselves and wait for the advice and counsel that we need from, it's some lawyer, we could do that later. It's, uh, unusual to have, uh, hearings prior to legal counsel reviewing. And then it's, it's common practice for legal counsel to review, uh, proposed zoning bylaws.
Um. Well, we, we meet on the fourth and the eighteenth of August, right? The first internal.
Calendar party, yeah.
So.
Word for it.
So we scheduled, um, our next hearing for the eighteenth. Um, do you think that, um, the attorney would have information about that?
I'm not, no, not based upon my, my communications with him. He's, he's been very clear that, um, they are backed up and, you know, Tyler, that's why this is difficult legally, like, there's more complexities to municipalities, more state mandates, more, and there's not enough municipal attorneys. So that's why I suggested the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth, because I think that is safe, because.
Twenty-seventh I can't, but I could do the twenty-eighth.
So, um.
I'm good with twenty-eighth.
Well, it's shaky for me. I can't say yes or no, but it's potentially no.
I'm going to have to go with majority.
Twenty-eighth is the last day in August, I can do it. Or you can do September second. I mean, it's just a few days, but, you know, we're in September.
So how's that affect our downtown designation application?
It's getting tight. Well, it, we, we want to be submitting the draft, uh, two weeks before the, uh, September second. Um, and what, what's riding on the, I'm, I'm having a conversation with Scott tomorrow at eight-thirty a.m. to discuss some potential.
Okay.
So whether it's, whether it's August nineteenth even, that, what is August nineteenth or September second, that really doesn't impact the downtown designation question. It's, it's up in the air.
So really it's just about legal and we can get the information from legal.
Right.
So if we could do the twenty-eighth.
And I'm fine if I can't make the twenty-eighth, the rest of the board handles it, and that's fine. I don't.
You can't make the twenty-seventh, you said?
It's my anniversary.
I'm not gonna.
You have to talk to me.
I have slides. What about the twenty-sixth?
I could do the twenty-sixth.
I said twenty-sixth, seven, Tuesday.
Twenty-sixth is okay.
I would like to have the whole board here.
Yeah, Eddiean.
I agree. Um, sounds like twenty-sixth.
How about you, Richard?
Whatever. The only thing is, is like he told me at the end of the month, so like twenty-eighth, I can be like, come on, that's, that's the end of the month. So why, why don't you just say September second then? Because then I, I'm, you know, based upon his communication with me, I'm, I'm utterly.
If it doesn't matter, if, I mean, if we're, if that, if the downtown designation.
September, September. Yeah.
Yeah.
It was second this morning. We don't, we don't have a meeting scheduled on the first, do we, or?
We'll take the first.
Do we don't? No, it's, uh, it's a holiday.
Yeah.
It's a, September first is a holiday.
Yeah.
Okay, so September second?
Yeah, it would be the.
To continue.
We wouldn't have our meeting, we would be here.
It's Labor Day.
Well, actually, no, because it's the first.
The first is Labor Day.
We meet the second. So that would be fine, because we would meet the ninth.
Okay, I can do September second.
Yeah. But you meet the second, not the fourth. So that would be the.
Five thirty.
Twenty-third for us.
Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, five thirty? September second? So that's to continue.
Would that be our, our regular select board meeting anyways?
The first would be our regular meeting.
That's Labor Day, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you'd be meeting on the second. We're going to do a first and third, we, Monday.
Well, should it be the first of the day, you're right.
So we just, it would be a regular select board meeting if we're going to have.
With a public hearing as well.
Yeah. I mean, that's how traditionally we have it, is that we meet the Tuesday after.
Well, that's how it could, yeah, I mean, we could do it whenever. We could, yeah, we can do it the following one day. So that, you could have, you could have, uh, them the same day, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I prefer that than pushing it out further.
Okay, so we would, uh, recess this public hearing until September second, five thirty.
Yeah.
And then we don't need to warn it.
If, if it's continued dates certain, I don't believe, you shouldn't need to warn them.
So why don't I move that, uh, we recess the, um, zoning bylaw uh, public hearing to September second, five forty a.m. period.
I have a motion, I have a second. A motion by Chris and a second by Richard to recess this public hearing to September second at five thirty. So that would mean, um, we're going to have the public hearing before the regular select board meeting, if we have our regular select, select board meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to be clear.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Yes. Is that it? We're not.
We're just doing a review. Uh, yeah.
We are not adjourning, I guess we just recessed.
I will. We're going to be here before, we're trying to review panel. We're thinking about that.
You closed it. You already closed it. Not recess the public hearing, but do we adjourn, we recess the public hearing, do we adjourn a select board meeting? This, this is only a select board hearing on a bylaws, so.
Come on, executive session. We need to shut down.
We need to go back. So we don't need to adjourn the special.
It's not.
Because we, we're just going to be.
As far as this goes, I guess, adjourning may, I guess, certainly.
Thank you, uh,
Thank you.
Folks, so thank you very much for coming. Thank you. Thank you. It's been a ton of work.
Yeah, thanks.
I put it in for you.